...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll open up this year end, Saturday night, the wishers meeting for the auditor of the petition by the county attorney present. First on the agenda, we'll have Department of Defense Jerry at the corner.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for letting me go at this time, and I want to say Happy New Year to everybody, too. Hope it's all blessed for all of you. We've had very busy last few weeks in our office. I don't have all the data and statistics to give you today. We still have some outstanding autopsies and toxicologies that were awaiting their outcomes, so I'll have more precise figures for you as January rolls into play. Wanted to let you know that. I also have a question. We've got our power cot, we have had a few problems with it, but the gentleman's come down very timely, within 24 hours, and has gotten it repaired. There's no charge to our county for travel time, replacement parts, or any of his labor, so that's a great thing. What I've had, or I've been asking for, is to get the extended warranty, or the warranty extended, for the next three years. They've got a package, and I think I sent that to you, too. I did not have the signatures on that. I spoke with a rep yesterday and got that all taken care of. I'm hoping that we can go ahead and act on that today, so it would be on this year's business. As I have money for it this year, I do not have any money for it next year. So I'm hoping that I can redo the claim work, and I've got her signature, and that's already to be taken care of, if that's, if that would work.
All right, White. Okay, you have the contract, you have it?
Yeah, and I've got a copy of it right here, a hard copy. And I can get the, redo the claim for that.
Can we have a hard copy of that, then?
Yeah.
I know we got a lot left up.
Yeah, I'll give it to you right now.
Give her a hard copy of that.
Yeah. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so that's...
It's about $7,400. That's for the next three years. It extends it out, and like I say, there's no cost to the county. They do very timely business and to help us, and I'm grateful for that. They replaced the battery and the motherboard, which is highly not likely for something like that to happen on as new a machine as what we have, but this will protect us and be at no cost for anything that they do, and they, like I say, they're very timely.
That's $7,400 for all three years?
Yes, it's for all three years.
Yeah, stay worthy.
Mm-hmm. And that's for the power cot and the power load, so it's both, both things.
And you've got the money to pay that now, and you want to pay that now, and then that would go for the next three years?
Yes, yes. What happened was, I was originally taking it out of the equipment account, because I felt I didn't, I was ignorant. It was a piece of equipment, but it had to come out of service contracts, or contract services, and so we've had to create an account for that, so we moved it over. So everything's there waiting, ready to go.
Okay, so the contract started on June 24th, so I'm assuming that's when the warranty runs out, all existing?
Yes. Uh-huh.
Okay. February 27th, so. Okay, and the contract strikers in the three-year preventative contract, I guess, on the cons and the...
And the power load?
The power load, yeah. For $7,400, 77.59.
Yes.
So, motion to approve that, right?
Second.
All fair. Motion carries three O.
Thank you. I'm grateful, I appreciate that. Let me see. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm hoping to attend a workshop coming up next month. I'll be driving back and forth to San, Hamilton County. It's on death investigations and some of the different things on that, and I'll have that information to you. Also, I've got like a coroner training board meeting coming up with the state, and that's on February 9th. And I have not sent that to you, but I'll send that to you. So I'm looking forward to that. We're planning our next conference, which will be in June, and it's always an exciting time and a great time to meet the, meet the un-corons and just network and get together and do things. So that's all I have for today, but I'm going to thank you again, and have a Happy New Year to everybody.
You, too, Jerry.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, John, Highway Department.
Morning, Ellen.
Hi, John. I don't have very much. All I have is two permits. They're both from NIPSCO, Mark Thompson. The first one is permit 2329. He's asking for a permit to 3124 Wall Bash Avenue Rochester, to go from the corner of Wall Bash Avenue, east side of West Side Road, add a gas line, 240 feet, and into Ford, and there's a road there. I looked it over, didn't see any problems with it.
All right.
Right here, West Side Drive, please.
Okay, we entertain motion to approve permit 2329. Second. All fair. Motion carries three O.
And then the second one is basically the same thing, but it's at 3018 Wall Bash Avenue, and they want to deal under West Side Drive, that address, install the gas line. And this is permit 2330.
Okay. We entertain motion to approve permit 2330.
Second.
All fair. Motion carries three O.
Basically, all I have for you today. Want to show anything?
No.
You want to ask us? Probably have some more for you to use, Steve.
I'm good. You good?
I'm good.
You good, are you?
I'm good.
Is that, that's the shortest I've ever been?
I know, you're good. And that's...
Look at her.
I'm not saying that.
Yes, this is...
See, I always like the end of the year.
Yeah.
You said two permits?
Yeah.
Do you remember the answer?
All right.
Okay.
Kerry.
Yeah, I just got... Just an update. I did get the permission ordered for the, the room conference room in here, and for the judges at the courthouse. That will come in about four or five weeks, I'm hoping. Also, there's new signs that I've got ordered for the courthouse telling where security has moved, and the VA and the type 4D offices. And also, the blinds, I've updated on those. Those blinds are supposed to be in, I hope, they're thing this week, so that maybe we can get them installed in the first or second week of January, and all the new blinds that we've been on order for a while.
And that was from wordplay?
Yes. So then, that's all I got, just a quick update.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks, Kerry. Anything?
I don't have any.
Okay. Doug, what's going on there?
Yep.
Okay. Travis?
Sure. Seventy-nine inmates, and we're looking at changing the phone contract in the jail. So I sent that to Holly, she's good with it, so we're going to probably proceed with that. It's a stellar suit, we're going to go with, the same one that does our commissary, so it just makes sense to get it all under, under one company, so I think they're going to do this a little better, revenue generated, so.
All right. Yeah, good. Yeah, go on.
I'm just, I'd like to, just asking for one of my employees to work remotely, so she's on medical leave for a family member. Asking for permission for that, that's it.
We entertain motion to approve the medical leave for one of Dawn's employees. Second. To work from home.
Yeah.
Second. All fair. Motion carries. Okay.
I'll sign that after, if you'd like.
Okay. Got the money on that. We have travel optimizations. You guys can do those? Any questions on those?
Okay.
Okay, we have wellness resolution here. Does anybody, Holly's looked it over?
Yes.
You good?
Yes.
Do we have any questions on this? We have Brad here, Woodlawn.
This is actually ours. Brad will do the contract on that.
The contract.
He will do the contract part of it. We made a resolution that they must get physical once a year to qualify for it, because they, basically what we're...
Gotcha, okay.
That's what you...
That's a good, good idea.
Steve's got a question.
Physical, I mean, like the thing we do here.
Talk a little louder, I can hear you.
Wait on it, what do you need, physical?
To, to physician.
You can do either or.
They offer twice a year, which you can go with one of the free ones here, or if you're on medication and you go to a doctor anyhow to get the medication, and then you get a physical. You can bring, bring it in, and that'll, that'll work also.
Sir, you guys, I'm sorry. I was going to ask, can we clarify that? Because what we do here is your, your wellness examination. That's technically not a physical.
I don't know, that's how it's worded. It's a wellness exam.
Okay, the wellness exam, okay, good. I just want to make sure we didn't put a, put a client in a situation where they think they've got to go in and see somebody instead of doing this here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're, they're required to come to one of these things at least once a year?
In, in the event that something happens by schedule or just circumstance, and they can't make it to one of the two scheduled ones, we will set up a place where they can go to the hospital and get that same work checked in order for them to qualify.
Cool. I don't agree with that. Do you want him to read the whole thing, or do you, is it okay just to read by title?
It's a Holly question. Read by title.
Just read by title.
Do they have any question?
If they look at it.
They are required to take one of them, of office exams here, a year, at least.
They don't have to do it here. But if you're on medication and you're already getting a physical from your doctor, that'll still qualify.
Right.
I mean, you know what I'm trying to say, but...
Well, I mean, that's my concern. I think they should be required to do something at least.
That's, that is...
Or insurance rates.
That is different, though. So when you go in and see your doctor for, and you've got a medicine you just need to get an update on, or you don't typically just automatically get all that lab work and get your blood pressure, well, you get your blood pressure checked.
My doctor does, I come on blood pressure medicine.
So you always get that?
Blood work, blood work once a year. I've had blood work done once a year.
So that depends on what medicine you're on. So that would mean that certain patients, if they're just getting med refills and things like that, they may not be required. What I'm saying is, we will make sure that any of those people who don't get to one of these health fairs that still wants to be part of the program, we've got a location right there in the Schaefer Building now, where a nurse practitioner's there, and all of the equipment, the laboratory equipment that we use here will be set up, and we can get them in there to get that same exact stuff done there if they can't get it done. If their doctor already does it, great, you're covered. But in the event that they don't have a medicine that they have to get blood work every year, then we can make sure it happens.
Okay. So then, is there going to be a specific form, then, for, you know, if somebody would go to the doctor as opposed to the wellness clinics?
We would have them use the same form.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll distribute that form out to everybody, all of our providers, so that when you go into the doctor, they'll know, oh, he's here for this. Let's go ahead and get that taken care of.
All right. Reed this right in this, also, the trouble with CDL physicals, like for John's employees.
Yeah, your, your CDL physical's cost is gone now. That's just covered as part of the program. Yeah, I know that was something you guys, you guys wanted that.
Unless they ain't in the program.
Correct. If they're not in the program, it doesn't cover it.
Yeah.
Yeah. For those people who choose to be in the program and maintain the requirements.
Right.
Then CDL physicals will be covered under the program.
Any other questions?
I guess, I guess I got a question. Why wouldn't we require people that have CDLs to be in the program? Do we, do we pay for their physicals, or do they pay for it?
They do, or they pay.
Okay, never mind. I'm just, I was trying, I was trying to...
That's a benefit to entice to get into the program.
I agree, yeah, they should have incentives to get into the program, so, yeah, I agree.
There's also a challenge in lots of states right now, that you can't force someone.
Oh, in these...
You can't require every single human being to be in a wellness program.
Gotcha, yeah.
You can't. Now, you can offer it, and it's an option, but you can't say, everybody does this, or we won't insure you, or we won't pay for it.
And I think, help me out here, Christina, how do you set that up? There's a sign off on that, right? If you don't want it, you have to sign off saying...
Yeah, you don't have to accept it or anything.
Yeah.
Good questions. Any else? Okay. We have a resolution, 12182023. That's resolution offering health and wellness services to eligible employees of Fulton County Government. We're going to get a motion to approve resolution 12182023. So...
Second.
Any other questions? All fair. Motion carries three O. Okay?
And we got to do this one. This is actually Woodlawn's contract. This was our agreement that if our employees want to use it, this was our resolution, so we have to do that.
So we have Woodlawn's proposal here for health services and wellness agreement, and that is $35 a month for employee, correct?
Yes, yes. And the council's already, if we signed it, the council's already agreed to pay for it, 100%.
All right. Any other questions about this proposal? We're going to, we're going to motion to approve the proposal for services from Fulton County Hospital.
So then?
Second. All fair. Motion carries three O. Brad, thank you for showing up and helping us with that.
Yeah, no problem. And as things come up, just call, and we're going to have situations that just come up where employees maybe join mid-month, or something happens, and we'll work through whatever we need to.
Okay.
This is effective what date?
January 1st. So, Tuesday, that's why we had to get it done.
And I'll get together with Christina, and we'll figure out a rollout plan with some information to the employees, and we'll, we'll get them kind of a special card that once you've determined who's enrolled, they'll have a card that'll say Fulton County Wellness and Health Services Program that they can present when they go to the doctor's office, because, you know, the big part of this is that it saves the employees from having to pay any, any copays or deductibles for just an office visit. So we'll get those issued once we get the list of who chooses to be in the program and all that. Yeah, it'll be something similar to that.
On the back?
Yeah, it's on the back of the, the proposal there.
You got your contract signed, so I imagine she'll want to make a copy of it, but other than that, get it from her whenever you need it.
Oh, you know what to do.
Just email me a copy, that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth, if you...
I'm good.
Okay. We have...
Hi, John. It's Susan.
Okay. Okay, then we have the contract for Ritter Services here. It's to, uh, help us with the Lutheran contract, and to monitor the, the four years of the contract, if it does go Lutheran, so. We have a three-year, it's a three-year contract.
Four years.
Four years. Three-year test, three-year contracts, four years.
Do you remember reading that, Holly? That was a four-year, wasn't it?
It was.
Three-year, okay. How many, how many changes? Are you 187?
No, it wasn't the $7,400?
That's probably...
Oh, that's something.
It's kind of like a question.
Four years? Helps if I have two of them. Okay.
Is that the food on your mid-morning snack?
It's fifty gals. Okay.
That's what it is.
Took a $150 an hour, forty hours quarter.
Yeah, it was not to exceed... All right, you come back in a minute, I'll see if I can find it on my laptop. Thank you.
Okay. We have, uh, letter, engagement letter from our attorney for the 24-year, for $20,000 annual term. We have a motion to approve. I suppose.
I didn't get a second.
Ask me questions.
Did they ever negotiate that time?
Yeah, we should have negotiated that.
Okay, we have a, Rick, I'll let you speak to this. We were talking with Charlie, we were talking with, well, I guess Charlie and Michael, the Fedco, the Charlie Sparks proposal.
Yes, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Charlie Sparks, but he was from Matt Ward and Fedco for the State of Indiana for many years. He worked in Kokomo for many years. He retired and abducted the lake, and I know we've talked to him on a few projects that's going on from time to time, and Michael's been consulting a little bit, and he made us a proposal to keep him, to actually be working from, with us. He will be working out of the Fedco office as a consultant to us. He will be consulting Michael and elected officials, and the city is also going to enter into the contract. We're going to split the contract with the city and the county, and it is for, our share is $35,100. Yeah, $35,100 a year, and the city will pay $35,100, so we can all use him as, you know, he's a proven, that proven asset, bringing business and stuff into town. So we thought we would, well, my thought is we'll give him a shot and see if we can try to turn something around in here.
Did he come and speak one time, or was that...
He, he has done some IV tech, he's been with the Learning Center, done some classes and stuff, or...
I don't think it was the gentleman, it's one of the several, I think, you know, I'm talking about. Yeah. That was, yeah.
Was it Chris Harrison?
Could be, could be. But, so there's where we're at.
I think Charlie isn't correct, but he's willing to kind of help land the EV plant in Kokomo. So he, he knows a lot of, a lot of people, it's, so. The contract here is proposals from January 1st of '24 until December of '25. I don't know if we want to do a two-year contract, or have it year by year, and make sure...
Two years for $35,000.
Say that again.
Is it two years for $35,000?
No.
For two years? For two years? Yeah.
Think, thought guy, right, did you want to do one year or two year? He's got it two years now.
I would rather, I mean, personally, the one year, and that's kind of what we get Michael just started, just to...
I can understand why he wants two years, because if he gets something, he doesn't want to get trumped, and...
Well, we can always extend it. If he starts on the bill, we...
We're not going to, yeah. So I'm good, I'm good with the year, if that's what you want to do.
That works for me. Does anybody have any questions on Charlie Sparks, and what this is kind of about?
I guess it'll be approval upon, you know, council, council amendment, and I don't know if, if the city would turn it down, you know? I don't know. Was that in there? I can't remember if that was in...
I don't think that was in there. If the city turns it down, then basically...
Oh, it does say something about companion proposed, so that's all I made it was in there.
So, I would entertain a motion then to accept this proposal from Charlie Sparks, the consultant fee for one-year term pending the council's approval and the city's approval.
So then?
Second. Any other questions? All fair. Motion carries three O.
Is this you?
Yeah.
So, we have to put that...
Yeah, I'm trying to find your...
We can, we can take it till Tuesday if you want.
Oh, sure, we can. Yeah, we can, yeah, let's do that. That way we have the right to...
All right. We have claims. Okay, we have payroll for 1229, you guys can pitch us a little things, any questions?
Other than, this, this was the updated document, so when we get to that, make sure that the miscellaneous claim document matches up. I don't know if they got switched out, or if he had an updated one, she said, an email one.
I asked this amount just in the meeting.
Oh, so they are...
Yes, we...
Okay, okay.
Okay, we have the payroll for 1229, 23, of $253,417.83, with a payroll deduction of $41,312.20. Okay, we have the, uh, PTRC fall settlement of $1,248,159. We have the settlement for the CBET and FID, fines and fees, $1,298,97.15. We have the council on aging reimbursement, number 5311, $78,801. We have utilities, $14,903.33. We have credit card, $11,211.81. Tourism claim, $16,122. We have mislaid claims of $861,300. We have miscellaneous claims of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents. We have transfers. Communications for health insurance to the director, two cents. Uh, probation, health insurance to Perth, two cents. We have commissioners, health insurance to Perth, twelve cents. We have a highway, highway, uh, health insurance to Perth, nineteen dollars and ninety-one cents.
Did you get a copy of that one, John? Did you get a copy of the, where she switched the money around for you so you know, so it doesn't mess up your budget?
It possibly messed up his budget, he's done with his budget for the year.
I imagine we put that in, didn't we, we submitted that?
No, submitted by Christina.
Christina lost the vote yesterday, so I'm not sure what you submitted or what she submitted.
I'm not sure. But this.
Okay, do we have? What's that?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Okay, we have reassessor, health insurance to Perth and deputy, four dollars and nineteen cents. We have circuit court, health insurance to court reporter and Perth, three hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy cents. We have courthouse, uh, health insurance to life insurance, eighty-eight cents. We have the courthouse, uh, two thousand dollars for elevator maintenance to utilities. We have the annex, four thousand dollars for equipment repair to utilities. We have, uh, from the coroner, uh, six hundred for autopsy, to six hundred for violence. We have the highway mechanic. Workers' comp to, uh, repair bridge, seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Commissioners, fifty-five hundred from exam records to bonds. And the sheriff, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-nine cents for health insurance to the deputy. We have transfer from the, uh, community corrections. From health insurance to HSA Perth for five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. We have probation, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents from secretary number two to secretary. Transfer from communications. And these are council. What's that say? These are ours. We have communications, two hundred dollars from repair maintenance to training. We have county election board, six hundred and twenty dollars for election monitoring service to, uh, inspectors, transfer money to pay election workers, the original claims, and correct the fund. We have prosecutor's office, thirty-four dollars for computer maintenance software to continue the education. We have the coroner, twenty-five hundred dollars from X-ray lab to the deputy coroner. We have commissioners, health insurance, uh, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. We've got health insurance, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, two different funds, or the same fund, and nine eighty-five to the IT director and Perth. Forget that till Tuesday, Christina? Please don't add up the amount, this is less than he's asking for.
I would guess that these are correct. Or he's saying how much more? But I would guess the total would have worked with that.
Christina, there's one here, three kind of probation. Got wrote on here, probation's for nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents, says only eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents left. How can we do that if there's not enough money in there to move or appropriate?
Is he just asking for whatever he has available to be moved? I can only use what's available, so unless he's paying a portion, I don't know.
I don't, I think that's what I think.
You guys wrote it in, I was there.
I'll only be able to move eight hundred and ninety-two dollars if left, not full nine seventy-three.
Thank you. Okay, back to the commissioners, we have the nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-five dollars from the health insurance to the IT director and the Perth, which is one thousand, forty-seven dollars. So, nine sixty-one. We have the sheriff, animal control supply, five hundred dollars from there to utilities. You guys have any old business?
No, I don't think so. Oh, I do got, uh, the ARPA, I got it wrote on my notes, did we have the ARPA?
Christina, it's the ticker of two, Bill.
Okay. I guess that's all. Gail, was he supposed to be on the Gail? Work from home for two days, or, isn't that what you come in and ask for?
Yeah. No.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with you.
No.
All done. Motion, Laura.
Second.
We've been, uh, all paid, motion carries three oh.
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, do whatever you gotta do.
Good times. I checked in with Don Hall, and they told me it was okay, just come on down, so.
Okay, you signature it, George.
Just as Commissioner's office, so.
Brian, then.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just that there's something in those two white boxes, and they just wanted an image to.
It's not close.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
All right, Rick.
I think I'm done, I think I got all mine.
Okay. Christina, any old business?
No.
Old business? New business, here?
No, I don't believe so.
Day. Christina? Any new business? Interdiction motion to recess.
Second.
Motion carries, I guess, we're adjourned.